At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting together. Could you call roll?
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen? Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Fawn?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here. Okay, any oral communications related to the Housing Authority? Seeing no cards, move on to item number two, reorganization of the Housing Authority.
I'll make a motion that we leave it at as it is.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Motion received six yes. Well, wait a minute. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Motion received six yes votes.
Okay, item number three, consent items. One item is the Housing Authority's status report for November and December 2013. Comments, questions? Is there a report?
Seem file.
Entertainer motion?
I'll move that we do just that.
I second it.
Call for the vote?
Motion received six yes votes.
No public hearings tonight. Items for consideration, none. Any matters from the commissioners, staff? Seeing none, we'll move for adjournment. We adjourn.
At this time, we'll call the Garden Grove City Council to order. Ms. Baylor, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Fawn?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen? Mayor Broadwater?
Here. Okay, at this time, we will have the pledge allegiance given to, led by Steve Jones, and then we'll have the, we'll reverse this. We'll have Kingsley give us the...
Invocation.
Invocation.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your fate. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence over this council meeting tonight. We ask that you bestow your blessings and wisdom to everyone present here. May your hand guide the discussions and the decisions made here this evening for the benefit of all in our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Please face the flag of our great nation and say the pledge with me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding that we have a community spotlight this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Okariki to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight, the city council is honored to recognize a devoted group of commissioners who have played a significant role in the progress and enhancement of the city of Garden Grove. These two community representatives are dedicated volunteers appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. They serve as advisory groups and make recommendations that become part of the decision-making process that help to improve the services and programs offered to all Garden Grove residents. I would like to call forward the commissioners present by order of the commission they serve on and give a brief description of their respective duties. I ask that each of you please stay standing after being called so a group photo can be taken at the end. I'd like to invite up Jeremy Harris from the Main Street Commission. The Main Street Commission plans the future parking lots, monitors maintenance of existing lots, and prepares the budget for the downtown parking district. They also oversee the maintenance of Main Street and help to keep the area's historic charm. Commissioners are tenants or business owners on Main Street. Next, we'll call on Tran from the Parks, Recreation, and Art Commission. Please step forward. The objective of this commission is to review and make recommendations on the status of parks and recreation programs offered by the city. In addition, the commission reviews capital improvement plans for the park facilities and proposes amendments to the general plans, park, and recreation element. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present all the commissioners with a certificate of appreciation and a small token gift for their loyalty, dedication, and outstanding service. The city of Garden Grove thanks you for your commitment and service to the community. Thank you.
You guys like to say a few words?
Sure.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff, for this recognition and honor tonight. I'll keep my comments brief. I'd just like to say, speaking probably for past and present honorees of this recognition, the reason why we do this is because we like to volunteer. We love to give back to our community, and we love Garden Grove. Whether you're a business owner, whether you're a community leader, whether you're a resident, you know, we do what we do because we love Garden Grove. I also say that because just over my right shoulder, as I look at my daughter, my wife that are here with me tonight, you know, we do what we do because we want to make sure the future generation gets to enjoy what we've got to enjoy as we've come through Garden Grove. Proud to say that my daughter is a fourth-generation Harris to call Garden Grove home, and we truly believe in volunteerism, and we're proud to be part of this city and look forward to working with the city and the residents here as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me an opportunity to actually serve as the commissioner for the city of Garden Grove. It was actually a great honor to actually work with Chris Phan, city council, you know, on his campaign and be given the opportunity to serve and volunteer for this great city. And actually, during the time that I served, I actually get to learn a lot from the city and many of the different leaders around here, so I look forward to continuing serving with you guys and Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll go to oral communications for the city council, the successor agency...
Human relations?
Ooh, yes, 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 community relations. Take that back. We're going to go to human, uh...
Human relations.
Human relations.
Yes, we have a representative from the Orange County Human Relations Commission here to give an annual update if they would like to come forward at this time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor Broadwater, councilmembers, city staff, Mr. Fertal, and Chief Rainey, and Garden Grove community members. You see me every year, so I'm glad to be back here, and it's a pleasure to report on the work that we've done for fiscal year 2012, 2013 with OC Human Relations. My name's Carol Turpin. I'm the chair of the OC Human Relations Commission, and I'm here with a colleague, Rabbi Richard Steinberg, and we're going to do a joint report tonight. He's a new commissioner, and we're really glad to have him on board. So we want to present you with our annual report. You should have a copy of that at your seat, and I encourage you to take a look at that when you have more time as well. But it really does focus on our organizational mission, to build community by fostering respect and resolving conflict and pursuing equality, and that's what this organization is all about. So you'll find a lot of outcomes within our report. In a few minutes, we'll cover some of those ways that we've worked within Garden Grove specifically, but we want to talk a little bit about two things. One, I first want to congratulate Garden Grove for being an awards 42 recipient last year at our annual event. Garden Grove High School was awarded for the Bridges Youth Violence Prevention Program that's on the high school campus, and many of you know that the Bridges is a youth violence prevention program. Garden Grove High School has maintained a stellar Bridges program since 2007, and in spite of budget constraints, has done a really great job with that program on campus. I just wanted to congratulate the city and congratulate Garden Grove High School. You know, every year, some cities in our county struggle with unique conflicts, and OCHR is here to provide targeted support. Some of these conflicts occur, this past year, at public meetings where we saw some profane and abusive language and hateful speeches in public demonstrations happening. And so OCHR worked with the county to provide a unique forum, and Rabbi Steinberg is going to talk a little bit about what we did with, with this event.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The OC Human Relations Commission, in partnership with the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the Association of Cities, conducted this forum Carol spoke of to develop practical guidelines for managing civility in public forums such as this, and I'd like to submit a copy of the guidelines for your use. We were looking at the topic of free speech combined with the issue of hate speech and tried to create guidelines that city councils could use in public meetings, could possibly use as guidelines for how to handle those kind of situations, when people are being threatened and whatnot, and when it is just public speech that somebody is entitled to say. And so it's not only for city councils, but also for any commission in which there's a public hearing, so we hope you'll use that as well and hope that there will be a balanced approach by using our guidelines.
I mentioned our annual report, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about the specific services we provided Garden Grove last year. We mediated 311 cases as well as 25 family mediations where one of the parties was a resident of Garden Grove, and those mediations really do help save the tax dollars for our county. In collaboration with Garden Grove Police on Hate Crimes and individuals or community groups on hate incidences, we documented three hate crimes in Garden Grove in 2012. We also provided support to victims through our victim assistance partnership. With our youth, the 23 Garden Grove youth participated in our Bridges Violence Bullying Prevention Program. Two of those attended our summer leadership camp, and three participated in a year-long human relations internship program, and that's really a year-long leadership-building program with the youth. Eight Garden Grove students participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoes symposium, which we held at UC Irvine last year, and this is where they learn about respect and tolerance and how to be a campus leader.
As we begin the 21st year of the OC Human Relations Partnership with OC Cities, it is notable to recognize that in addition to these specifics areas, we provided Garden Grove this year other essentials through the whole county as well, as in working to maintain the capacity of the OC Human Relations throughout the county when there were human relations crises happening. This year, our capacity was crucial to being able to help in residents to understand what many African-Americans face in our neighborhoods on a daily basis through the community listening sessions. We also assisted cities to rebuild police-immigrant community relations in the aftermath of some violent confrontations of which we are all familiar here in Orange County, and we also collaborated with others in the county to address the need for permanent supportive housing for the mentally ill and multi-service homeless shelters to reduce the number of people living on the streets.
And we also submitted a couple of copies of our listening session reports, so we didn't have one for all of you, but you can take a look at that. We submitted that to, to the city. So OC Cities may not have major conflicts every year, but when a crisis does hit, it can be enormously expensive to address the public safety concerns, the human suffering, and the reputational cost for the city, and with a strong partner like OCHR to come alongside and help build out your human relations capacity, you can achieve your public safety and budget goals. And we just want you to know we're here for that if you ever need our support. We look forward to serving you in this coming year, and would like to extend an invitation to attend our awards 43 event, which is coming up on May 8th. We're going to be focusing on the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act and kind of highlighting some of our local Orange County civil rights activists, so we look forward to seeing somebody there if you have a chance. And right now, I'd just like to present the mayor and the city certificate for outstanding commitment to fostering mutual understanding among residents and eliminating prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to oral communications for the city, and we'll do the sanitary district and the successor agency altogether. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. This weekend is going to be filled with activities. We have a Tet Festival here in Garden Grove, and there is also another festival that is going to be going on at the Orange County Fairgrounds, all this celebrating the Year of the Horse, and there is a special event in Los Angeles, and that is a parade. It is the Lion Parade, which is something that celebrates again the New Year, so I hope that everyone has an opportunity to attend however of these events they're able to get to, but good luck and Happy New Year. Now, there's an item on the agenda, item 4C, which isn't very clear when you read the agenda. It merely mentions an agreement, but that was the rail line coming from Santa Ana along 17th and Westminster to Harbor Boulevard, and as I recall, Mr. Mayor, you had some very valid criticisms of this project and the fact that there's very little benefit to our city of having this project and what it will do to 17th Street and Westminster Boulevard is going to be a real nightmare for people trying to drive east or west on that thoroughfare. So I'd like, hope that you will give it full consideration before voting on this issue because, again, what's in it for us? Now, a while back, we had a project that was in the works, and that was the Brookhurst Triangle. The project was to put condominiums, work, live, along Brookhurst Way, and although it was required, nonetheless, the city put on some very fine demonstrations of what the project would look like, maps, diagrams, pictures here at the civic center, showing people what to expect. Unfortunately, the project that has been proposed on the west side of Main Street has not received the same amount of attention from the city to educate the people on what the project is about and what the benefits or detractions might be from it. I realize that you're not under the same obligation you were for the Brookhurst Triangle, but I would encourage the city to put forth an opportunity for the developer, Mr. Sheldon, and the city to present the idea exactly how they plan to do this and what the benefits or detractions might be for the city. Thank you.
Scott Weimer.
Hey, everybody. Hi. I'm Scott Weimer. I own a business and a building on Main Street, Garden Grove, and I'm down here to speak about the Sheldon Project, obviously. Relating back to the meeting of January 14th, 2013, I'd like to thank you personally, Mr. Broadwater, for directing staff to pull the consent item from the planning agenda regarding the disposition and sale of the Main Street parking lot behind Main Street. To Sheldon Public Relations firms, until we, the business and property owners and concerned citizens, have an opportunity to take a look at that project, be apprised by staff as to the status and scope of the project, we sincerely appreciate that, and again, thank you. We're now, however, a bit confused. We, having not heard anything from staff, we took it upon ourselves to go ahead and invite the developer, Mr. Sheldon, down to one of our downtown business association meetings, and sure enough, he came, and we sincerely appreciate that as well. I believe he's in the audience somewhere here tonight. He came down and took some shots, and we appreciate the fact that he did come down and meet with us and that he's acting diligently to try to convince us that this project is much better than the last project and that it might even be a boon to Main Street. One thing that he did mention, however, that somewhat alerted and alarmed all of us was that he made a statement that the property is already an escrow, to be purchased outright. Now, Steve did recant that immediately. I do have to say, however, why in the world would he say it if it wasn't true? That's what concerns all of us. Inquiring minds such as myself, we think that we deserve to know what's going on, particularly since this council, under the direction of staff, back in a closed session meeting in November 26th, a couple of months ago, where the price and the terms of the sale of the mark of the Main Street parking lot to Sheldon Public Relations was discussed with the public not invited, of course. To me and to most reasonable people, those facts and actions would indicate that not only is the property very possibly now an escrow, but that there would also then have to be presumably plans that are in existence, entitlements, variances, a new environmental impact report, of which, of course, there wasn't on last time, but we would hope that there'd be one this time, as well as a development and disposition agreement in place, and possibly even a proposed close of escrow and project start date. We'd really, really, really like to know what's going on here, and we beg of you to please share some of the information. And then, of course, if all these things do exist, then it would mean that you, that staff has probably already complied with all of the statutory requirements that are outlined in the state's government code in relationship to the disposition of sale of publicly-owned property. Following our meeting with Mr. Broadwater, we learned that the current proposed project is significantly different in size, scope, and design, and that the project is significantly different than the project of which he attempted to build last time back in 2006. Therefore, I believe that this would not be considered a carryover project, but in fact would be a new project, most likely triggering the government code sections that require certain due process procedures to be followed and utilized before the selling off of the public's land. I also believe that the code would then call for having to offer it up to other public service agencies and districts within the area for their acquisition and use, if in case they might have a more useful purpose for it than to be used as parking. I believe that this governmental entity of elected officials would have to make the determination also in order to be surplus land that is no longer needed for parking. If all these determinations are made, then the legal requirement would then be to put this now-recognized useless and surplus property out to an open bid so as to ensure that in the selling off of the public's land, that the best future use is determined and that the highest price is established, assuming, of course, that all of these due processes and procedures are in fact carried out with full transparency and with the public's opportunity to be involved. In closing, I advise you that as of today, we have yet been contacted by staff in regards to our request and to your direction, Mr. Broadwater, in providing us with full disclosure regarding the proposed disposition and sale of the Main Street parking lot, along with all the pertinent and applicable information relating to this newest and latest Sheldon condominium project. I thank you for your time, and I thank Mr. Sheldon for attempting to be open with us as well, and I could only ask that the staff would be as well. Thank you.
Russ McDonald.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. Name's Russ McDonald. I've lived in this city for over 30 years and the county for over 60. I'm here tonight to do a couple of things here. First off, the Main Street parking. I do enjoy going down to Main Street and go to the restaurants when the gym theater was going. I guess it's coming back up again, but I used to take in shows. It was fun. It was neat, and to me, Main Street is Garden Grove. That represents Garden Grove. It's not, it's not your big fancy hotels out there on Harbor Boulevard, okay? It's not, it's not your big fancy hotels out there on Harbor Boulevard, okay? It's Main Street. And if you guys go ahead and let this development take place, you're gonna kill Main Street because there's gonna be no parking for the people. There's hardly, on the east side, I guess it's the east side, where the college is, you guys got rid of it, and so you can't park there unless you get towed off, you know? The car shows they used to set up in there, they can't do that. You guys are slowly choking Main Street off, okay? And I, for one, would love to see that parking lot be prettied up, get that fence from down around it, put some flowers and planters in there, make it, resurface it, make it look nice for the people of Garden Grove. If you, if you let this development go, where are you gonna park? Over in Costco? I don't think so. That won't work out. Another thing, Consent Item 4H. It's the adoption of a resolution allowing the city manager or designated to execute certain agreements. I understand it's forty, fifty thousand dollars is the max, whatever. We didn't elect this gentleman, okay? And how dare you guys allow him to spend our money without even, you know, what's up with that? It's the people. You guys forget who you're working for. You're working for the people. Another thing, in my water bill, I get this thing here, it looks pretty nice, too, but it, where is it? Buy Garden Grove. Well, a while back, I asked somebody here, as a matter of fact, a couple of you, about why am I sending my trash bill to Arizona when I got CRNR, a trash company, right here in Garden Grove? Why am I doing this? Okay? We're supposed to be buying in Garden Grove, right? Yeah. Okay? Well, why don't you guys buy in Garden Grove? Why don't you let these guys have a crack at it, okay? These sweetheart contracts you make with these trash haulers and others leave a lot to be desired, okay? You could be saving us, looking at the city of Orange and what they pay for the trash, I think we've got a ways to go on that. But enough of my complaining. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Craig Durfee.
Mayor and staff, thank you for the opportunity to address Items 4C and 4D. First of all, I know this is a resolution to work together with Santa Ana, but my question is, will there be a real master plan traffic study for the density? We rank third in Orange County, close to ten thousand per square mile. Is this gonna address Coscos and Home Depot that you thrive for your tax sales? Are you gonna tear it down? Are you gonna put a bridge over it? Chapman and Gilbert with a Walmart going in and with a fire station, with the Class One bike trail that Steve is on the OCTA, and with the proposed rail and the density of people living four to a house, maybe five to cars per residence. As this development continues to increase intensity, I learned in college in sociology, you can only put so many rats in a box, and then becomes a man. When are we going to actually have a master plan that address, like Newport Beach has, Long Beach and proposed Pasadena on Colorado Boulevard, a bike and pedestrian concept that has been proven in Bixi Knowles? It brought more bike people to shop closer, increased more bike shops. Why is it we can't have a traffic commission that responds to putting an agenda item on so we can have discussions? But this seems to be a constant building, and we'll hope and dream that somebody will spend a dollar in Garden Grove. But most people will bike or walk outside of Garden Grove because it is not a complete system. I ask that this traffic study, some forty-one thousand dollars, expand and focus on Chapman and Gilbert as part of the requirement before you vote on it, to ensure that we have a collective effort of our dollars spent for the study, ensure that we understand the traffic mitigations that's going to continue to stretch Gilbert Street that was never intended for what it was built for at the time in the fifties. I ask that these other areas, that the roads of Chapman and Brookhurst are breaking down. If you drive along, it's not hard to see, the cracks are wide. Then from over, from Stanford all the way to Chapman on Brookhurst Street, they're cracking up. The more traffic you put, the more density and the stress on the infrastructure, the city doesn't have the money. I think we need a balance so people can get along, people can have parks, and people can exercise in a great way that OCTA. Speaking of OCTA, distracted driving is an issue now to them because I've worked hard, and I think Garden Grove needs to work harder with me and the citizens of Garden Grove because it's been proven in voice of OC yesterday, more bikes, more walking, there's more space for traffic. Thank you.
Cheryl Armstrong. Are any more cards over there? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Staff, and Neighbors. I'm not sure where to begin, except the word that comes to mind right off the bat is secrecy. In just about everything I've heard in the last couple of weeks, because I've just gotten wind of this recently, things like no notification to any of the merchants on Main Street regarding this development that's going to supposedly happen on the west parking lot, disguising the project by labeling them with addresses rather than calling it what it was, which is Main Street's west parking lot. You know, it's been about six years since we went through this, and it's been about ten years since we had to cause the council and mayor to do what the people requested. Back then, it was the Gilbert Project. You know, but maybe about every ten years, we have to get ready and go to war against our elected officials. You know, I have better things to do, but I love a fight, you know? Hell with it. You know? You would think, after what happened in Bell with Robert Rizzo, he's gonna be doing time, and Angela Spasha, I saw her go out in handcuffs. I mean, you know, what the heck? All right. Now, that all being said, you know, who's to say? I kinda think Main Street could use a little jazzing up. I understand that the condos, that's just the, you know, the tip of the iceberg, apparently, in terms of rail going through, housing along the rail, bike paths. I'm not completely against all that, but why can't you just let us know what's going on? And another thing, when can we get answers to Scott Weimer's questions? He came up here and asked what's going on. When and where can we get our answers from you guys? We want to know exactly what you have planned. I think we have a right to know. Now, with all that being said, we, we're not, you know, I get emotional, I hate to speak in public, I almost faint and pass out, but I do it because getting angry is the only thing that makes me do it. But we have smart people in our group, and we can figure out what to do to make you guys behave. One other thing, there's a movie that I love. It's called Oh Brother, Where Art Thou? It's got George Clooney in it, so who wouldn't love it? In that movie, it shows, near the end, a mayor who was running for mayor, being hauled out on a rail, tarred, feathered.
There was a governor, Governor.
Governor of that state. That's what they used to do to people. All right. Thank you all. Bye.
Alex Mohammed.
Can't we just all just get along? Good afternoon, good evening, rather, Mayor, City Council, Staff. I brought some pictures I want to share with you. The item that I want to talk about is Item 7A, the tow contract, and if you can, pass this around. What these are, are, these are pictures of the companies that you guys have considered for the tow rotation. And I know staff is gonna put together a study for you guys, and I want you to see for yourself what these studies look like. I know you're gonna look at numbers, and you're gonna look at figures and scores that they put together, but I want you to look at these objectively, and I want you to make a decision for yourself based on what you see. They say pictures say a thousand words, and obviously, pictures don't lie. I believe that we represent, or I represent, a very, very good company. Now, I have them ordered from the rankings, from the best company to the worst company. If you look at the cover page, you know, you look at the first two companies that you guys selected, they, great companies, I think they've been with you guys for a long time, they have a great reputation with you. Kudos to them. I think they deserve the contract. I'm sure they're here tonight. Good job, guys. But you look at the third company, and all the way down, and you look at companies like mine, and it's, it's there in the pictures, guys. It's black and white. We're far superior company than they are. And when this whole process started, I did, after we got the extension to two point five miles, I did make a prediction to some of you guys, and I said, even, even though you saw how good our company looked and, you know, how some of these other companies looked, I would still be ranked seventh or eighth, either last or second to last. And I want you to look at these pictures, and I want you to see if there was, if there was just in this selection process. I don't think there is. I don't think the scores reflect our company. I think our company deserves to be on the tow rotation. So I ask you tonight to take a look at these pictures, consider either, you know, adding us to the rotation, or consider opening the rotation to everybody who's still left. I think the last cycle, there was five companies that were on the rotation, and one had fell off, so you guys had four left. If there was any thought to, to if it was worth it, if you opened it up to the six companies, I'm one of the six companies, and I tell you, it's worth, it's worth it to me. You know, you shouldn't look at it as, you know, keeping this contract to three companies and it being sweet for those three companies, but opening it up to the, to the companies that do qualify. I hope you guys consider that before you make your decision. Thank you very much.
Tony Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, Staff, and Council. I'm Tony Flores. You know, it's two thousand and fourteen. If I were gonna run in two thousand and fourteen for mayor or for council, if I were gonna run, not that I'm going to, not that I'm not, what I would suggest is, as far as a platform, I would look at transparency, open space, public safety, and nepotism. Let's talk about transparency. Apparently, there are some issues still with, with Main Street. There's a lot of questions out there that folks don't seem to be getting, and they feel like they're being either hidden or lied to or somewhere in between. We're gonna try and put ten pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag west of Main Street, and I don't think it's gonna work either. But what's interesting is, we're gonna be taking parking. For some reason, in Garden Grove, we seem to have a strong dislike for parking, and I'll tell you why I say that. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, the disposition and development agreement with Radisson called for two hundred and fifty-car parking structure, was never built. April two thousand and two, the COPs or Certificates of Participation, had ten million dollars set aside for a parking structure, never been built. And this most recent one, the Water Park, if you look inside the documents there, in the two thousand and ten, March two thousand and ten, Horworth, Horwath, excuse me, Finance Analysis, the five million dollars that's in the DDA, according to this document, it says that it's gonna be funded with a Maleruse tax. It's in the documents. Garden Grove doesn't have a Maleruse tax. I'm not sure how that's gonna be funded or what the, what the update is on that, but that's one. Open space. Garden Grove continues to lose open space. At one time, our general plan called for five acres per thousand people. It's my understanding, right now, we're at point eight-nine per thousand. And also, in the general plan, keep in mind that we considered the open space at the Garden Grove Unified School District as part of ours as well, which brings us to my next subject. And, Mr. Beard, you've seen some of this. Over at Mark Twain, we appear to be losing, or are about to be losing, three softball diamonds, three softball fields, where right now, Garden Grove Unified School District, excuse me, Garden Grove High School used to use as their softball program or part of it, and of course, a softball organization where they showcased kids that got scholarships. We're gonna be losing that. I was told today, when I talked to this principal over at Mark Twain, you know, too bad, you know, we've sent the permits over to Lake, and we've moved it over there. Well, you can't move three diamonds. There's only four at Lake. One's been designated for, for use for Garden Grove High School and for the softball program, but there's still only four. I went to Pacifica High School, so my math may be a little bit fuzzy, but, you know, seven minus three leaves us, leaves us four. We're not gaining anything here. We need to keep an eye on that. Public safety. Two thousand and fourteen website, I checked today, says that the PD has grown from twenty-seven officers to, from nineteen fifty-six to one hundred and fifty-nine today. Yet, in the two thousand and fourteen budget, we have one hundred and fifty-six officers. Recall that we had recent measures, one in two thousand and two and one recently in two thousand and twelve, that called for an increase in hotel visitors' tax, that said we're gonna get more cops, police, et cetera. That hasn't happened yet. It seems like we're gonna, in danger of losing officers. We're gonna have fatigue issues, morale issues, and maybe even lose people from lateral four, lateral moves to other departments, although we've added one more fireman, apparently. According to the newspapers, and this is where I get into nepotism, when is nepotism corruption, and when is corruption nepotism? According to the Garden Grove Municipal Code, no city official or employee shall participate in making and advising on employment in the city. As the article reads, "The mayor's son, who was one of five hundred applicants, made the forty-person eligibility list." That caused disturbance within the fire department, and there were letters that were tossed about. Nobody was able to get a copy of that letter from the fire association to the police chief, excuse me, the fire chief. I have to wonder what other folks in City Hall have had some influence and consideration for their relatives. An investigation probably needs to be done and done quickly. Any case, and I bring that up because we also had an issue back in nineteen ninety-seven. You'll recall that we had a discrimination harassment study was done. My understanding was that it did say that there was, in fact, within the police department at that time, harassment of women and discrimination of minorities in that report. And for some reason, that report's gone. I've asked the city clerk a couple of times, and I actually got a response on letterhead that says this report doesn't exist. This is nineteen ninety-seven. In nineteen ninety-seven, our mayor was, oh, it was Bruce Broadwater, you were the mayor then. We seem to have the same issues now. So any case, if I were to run, my platform would be nepotism, public safety, open space, transparency. Good luck to all of us in two thousand and fourteen. Thank you.
Maureen Blackman.
I don't think anything can top Cheryl. Where's Toby? Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Staff, and Neighbors. I have a question about- I have a question about, I'm the president of the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, but more importantly, I've been 35-year resident and taxpayer in Garden Grove. I'm wondering if I'm the only one that is really tired of double speak. Could somebody tell me what a fixed guideway project is? I believe it's on the agenda tonight, but it hasn't really been spelled out, that it's a metro and a streetcar.
I think a fixed guideway is one that runs by an electrical cord up at the top.
Yeah. I call it a streetcar. Does anyone else know what a guideway? Okay. Now, it's starting to ring true with me, because during the election campaign, I was super excited, because I heard Steve Jones talk about rebranding Garden Grove, and I really believed it. I thought, wow, our time has come. There's enough space, there's enough, maybe we're really going to make it. And rebranding and reimagining, and now I'm wondering if that's double talk. Is it really just, are we just ticking the boxes, but really, when it comes to the forefront, we're just going through the motions? We're not really intent on rebranding it? I pray that that's not the case, and I ask that, you know, I believe, call me naive, I grew up with the dad who ran off to the war at 17. He was the only kid, he didn't have to do it, but he did it. And he taught all of his seven kids that that's the way to do it. So, I still believe that that is the future of America. And if this council is going to crush my heart, could they do it in an open fashion? I really would appreciate that. So, I'm asking you to just let us in. We're not saying no. We're not saying no. We're just saying, we want a seat at the table, and we want a voice. So, I have some flyers, if somebody cares to. We asked city and staff to be at our meet on Main, one, and we're having a meet on Main, two, so if anyone is interested in the whole city, because we want to build a coalition of involved people, not just what I call the Garden Grove characters. We want to have, like, intelligent people sit down and just kind of hash it out. So, I would really appreciate it if on this Thursday, January 30th, anybody who's interested would please come out and share ideas. We'd really appreciate it. We're going to be at Chamber of Commerce at 6:30, so everyone is welcome. Thank you.
You know, when Stalin was the premier of the Soviet Union, and they'd have all those people out there clapping, nobody would quit clapping. Nobody wanted to be the first guy to quit clapping. It's just, so, a lot of clapping going on tonight. Andrew Halberstadt.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, I guess that's what I'm supposed to do, right? As the mayor said, my name is Andrew Halberstadt. I'm a resident of Garden Grove. I live here, I work here, I spend my money here. I grew up here, I went to St. Columbus. My first job in high school was washing dishes at Lakkus Market. I'd say, I'm a resident, I really am a resident. I care about what happens in this city. I've made a lot of friends being a resident in this city, a lot of people I care about, and they're all getting really agitated right now. And all that agitation is focused around this Sheldon project in downtown, on the parking lot. I want to know what's so important about this project? Why does it keep coming up? It's been going on for nigh on 10 years, right? In different erations, here and there. Thanks. So, for 10 years, we've watched this come through, pushed, and pushed, and pushed again. What is about that corner? Why is that developer? Why are those two things so intertwined? What's so important about it? Why does everyone say no, but it keeps on coming up as wanting to go through, wanting to be pushed through? We're supposed to reimagine downtown, right? Does that fit in our new imagination for downtown? Are we supposed to keep on selling off property, piece by piece, and just make it up as we go along? Or are we supposed to come up with a comprehensive plan? Does that fit inside the comprehensive plan? I see downtown being a crown for the city, a much deserved crown for the city, right? That crown needs a jewel. Main Street can be that jewel, and it won't have a chance to be that thing if we have a development that's ill-conceived going in and snuffing it out, because of its parking, because there's too many people, for whatever reason. Main Street needs to be given a chance, and that's going to come through all of the transparency, real consideration, real thought from the city staff, the council, and the members of the community, right? We live here, we have to go home here at night. We have to spend our money here, we have to park here, right? We want to go to places that we like. We don't want to go to places that we have to go to. So, please, this is a plea. Take your time and think about this. Show us what's going on. Let us have a say, let us have a word. Otherwise, it's just going to be this weird ghost town with no soul, right? Main Street is the historic and geographical heart of the city. We should keep it that way. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Mayor, council, staff, residents, neighbors, friends, business owners. I too am here to speak about the parking lot, the proposed Sheldon proposal from the, what is he, a, what is his title? Community developer paid consultant with exclusive rights to build on our public land. How did that happen? How did that happen? What's that cost? All right. All right, so, obviously, the majority of our speakers here tonight have been here for one reason, and that is to show our displeasure with the pop-up last council meeting. Let me, wait, let me stop. I do want to thank you for postponing the planning commission's vote on this project to allow us to come together and talk about this a little bit more. We almost didn't have that opportunity. This just popped out of nowhere, all of a sudden, hey, guess what? We're getting rid of your parking. There was no public presentation, there was no news about this, we were not warned, we were not informed, we were not given the respect to our citizenship, our businesses, that we deserve with our public land. And I think that's what everyone's really upset about. I am going to ask again for more transparency to the tune of the Sunshine Ordinance. I've been asking for this for a couple of years, since Santa Ana thought about adopting it, and I still believe it's a great idea. Transparency in government should be expected, at the very least. We deserve that. We should know what's going to be going on, what's on the drawing board. Today, I wasted 39 pages of paper looking for this in our planning division of what we've got planned, our projects. Guess what? It's not in there. In fact, none of the recent projects that I've been looking at are in there. The train's not in there. Nothing's in here. This is 39 pages, it goes back to 2007, and nothing even says anything of value to let a resident know what's going on. Our city website needs a major tune-up. We should have readily accessible information available to know what are the next steps, what you've got planned for us, such as the water park, you know? 10 years ago, however long ago that started planning, we all would have loved to have a say in that before it was just a done deal. It's like, we don't have a say, and I think that's what people are so upset about. So, transparency, and also, community benefit agreements. What is the community going to get out of losing a parking lot, out of losing a place to park? How does that benefit us? It doesn't. Okay. This is going to be one of the more wilder things I've done up here. I wrote you a song. I hear the train a-coming, it's rolling round the bend, and I ain't seen the Sunshine Ordinance since I don't know when. I live in Garden Grove, don't know what's going on. Seems like we keep building condos till all that's old is gone. When I was just a baby, my mama told me, "Son, there'll be strawberry fields forever." I guess she was wrong, but I'm back at city council. I'm here, I've got to try. When I think about our Main Street, I hang my head and cry. Two more verses. I know you're loving this. I bet there's people meeting in some back room in the dark, dreaming of more condos with nowhere for us to park. Well, you know, I saw this coming. You can't let Main Street be. All those condos keep a movement, keep a coming, and that's what tortures me. Well, if they adopt the Sunshine Ordinance, or if that council seat was mine, we'd be proud to say we're Grovers, not South Anaheim. Proud of Garden Grove, that's where I want to stay. Please be open and transparent, blow all my blues away.
He paid me to make him last. Okay, let's go, I want to go to council members' response, we're through with the oral communications. I'll start off with a comment. He didn't have a pink card. I mean, the object of it is, these people are yelling at you right now for not doing anything right, and you can't even fill out a pink card? I don't know why you didn't fill out a pink card. You didn't let him speak, remember that. He doesn't have a right to speak either, huh? Mr. Fratell, these people here tonight, and one of the things, they didn't use the word, but they do not like to be blindsided. Nobody does like to be sucker punched. I don't like it, they don't like it, and I can certainly understand it. What I would like, on this program, on the, if we're going forward with this, I want to have a complete schematic laid out. What happens, when happens, and where is it going to be? And way in advance. I want it to be written up and printed out, so everybody can see where this advances to, if it does advance.
Fair enough.
It's more than fair.
I have an immediate question for the city manager. Is this property an escrow? Has it been sold to anybody?
The property is not an escrow. The property is actually owned by the redevelopment agency, now the housing authority. That took place in 2010.
Any sale of public property would require a review by the public at a city council meeting, council action, correct?
If it was sold to the public, at this point, transferring to the, or being sold to the redevelopment agency for redevelopment purposes did not fall into that same category.
But any kind of public, requires a public action?
Hey, hey, you all got to talk. Now, let him, let us get past here, okay? Please.
But for the housing authority now, to dispose of the property, yes, it will be under, at a public hearing, and it'll be fully disclosed as the terms and the authority to sell the property for a housing project.
Okay. I want as much transparency as I like that in the canoe word, like it. Let's make sure that, I mean, if we have to put it in neon, I want it out there, so everybody can see it. So, let's come up with a complete schematic on where everything is going to go, how it fits, and where it's going to happen. And then, once someday it comes before this council decide whether we're going to do this or not.
Will do.
Any questions? Anything else?
Well, I don't think the word's transparency in this project, it's over-communication. I think that should be the buzzword for this project.
Absolutely.
And involvement, and participation, and workshops, and information. So, that's where I stand.
If I may, there is a process when a concept, an idea, is developed, whether it's through a developer, a property owner, or even the city. And it takes months for those ideas and concepts to mature and get to a point where now, it looks like this is something that can be presented. The first opportunity to even share that with the council was as it related to the potential sale of the property. And that was done before the end of the year. And the next step would be to take that concept and prepare it for public presentation. The developer, recognizing the need to be transparent and try to get Main Street businesses involved, the Main Street Commission, sort of got ahead of staff as far as what we would normally do in a formal neighborhood meeting. Many, many of our projects, staff will coordinate what we call a neighborhood meeting, but that's noticing the public that a project is coming forward, and that's usually the initial opportunity to present that project to the public. That is going to happen next. The developer, again, trying to be proactive, made contact with the folks on Main Street, the downtown merchants, and attended the meeting last Thursday, ahead of the, what would be the normal, formal meeting that the staff would host. So, there's a little bit of getting ahead of the process in this project. It was unfortunate that the item that was scheduled for planning commission, which was not the sale of the property, it was a formal compliance of a general plan conformity, which had, was not the sale of the property, was not the approval of the project, but just to get some of the more procedural things out of the way, staff went ahead and scheduled that way ahead of the project itself. In hindsight, the public doesn't know the distinction between a general plan conformance and the actual approval or consideration of projects. So, that was unfortunate. I think that that item is what caused the community to think that this project is moving much further along than it is. It's at the infant stage. It's at the process where we're just beginning to present the concept to the various stakeholders. So, that was an unfortunate technical part, that it was scheduled for planning commission on a technical consideration. It was not the project, but it certainly did cause the folks to be concerned that this project is moving much faster, much further than it really is. It is at the infant stage. It is at the stage where a lot of our projects are, which is now, we're going to introduce it to the community. There'll be a formal neighborhood meeting within the next couple of weeks, and it will work its way through the process before it goes to the planning commission, before it comes to the council. So, a few things kind of got ahead of it, by no means trying to bypass our normal process. And we will be having a formal neighborhood meeting in the next couple of weeks, well before the project is brought forward to the planning commission or to the city council.
If I may, mayor. One of the things that I thought about when I saw and heard about the project was, how is it going to fit into the grand scheme of our downtown reimagined plan? And Andrew, you said, right, I want to make sure that what we do is, we make sure we build on the bigger picture. And so, Steve, with whatever, you know, thoughts that we may have with the project, let's work together and make sure that that's what we're working towards, is the bigger plan for downtown. I certainly hate to see a good, you know, revenue maker, a good opportunity for people to find a nice place to live, to be, you know, dash at the cost of parking. At the same time, we don't want to hurt downtown Main Street, because parking is invaluable. And if there's a way we can work together, make both of that happen, I think that would be the best way for the city and for all of us. So, let's work towards that.
At this time, we're going to take five minutes. At this time, we're gonna take five minutes.
We already did, uh, oral communications in conjunction with city council in Sand District, um, so we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Chair, uh, I need to point out that item 2C uh, is not being considered tonight. That item's been pulled. So it'd just be 2A and 2B.
With the consent calendar excluding 2C.
Second. Motion to receive five yes votes.
We have, uh, no public hearings and no items, uh, any matters from agency members. Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sand District.
All right, Madam Cork, please call roll for the, uh, housing, I mean, the sanitation district.
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Vice President Beard.
Here.
President Fawn.
Here. Uh, we've done oral communications, uh, we'll go to reorganization of our district. Any, uh, suggestions, comments for President, Vice President?
Question, are you willing to continue on?
I'll accept.
I'll move your.
A second.
Your appointment.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Was that for both? Chair and Vice Chair to say the same?
It was, yes.
Yes.
It's okay.
We'll skip three and four. Since we have none, we'll go to items for consideration.
Mr. President, item 5A is a contract with AKM Consulting Engineering Services. And Mr. Murray here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, President Pham, and members of the board. Tonight, the Board of Directors are being asked to award a contract to provide district engineering services for the sanitation district. Staff received proposals from two qualified firms and rated both firms with respect to their experience and specific services offered. Then staff negotiated a contract with the highest rated firm. AKM was determined to be the most qualified and offered the highest service as rated by city staff for not to exceed cost of $250,000. Staff is recommending that a professional services contract to AKM be awarded tonight, and to authorize the general manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. This concludes staff's report.
I have, uh, but one question. As far as the cost to, uh, 250,000, is that more cost-effective than us having our own in-house, uh, people do the inspection?
With the breadth of the services being offered, uh, the 250,000, it provides us with a lot more leverage because it isn't just one person. It's a, a range of people that offer more services. Very similar to our city, uh, city attorney, where you have various experts that are able to handle things. Uh, however, it is our goal to eventually, uh, get rid of using those consultant services as soon as our in-house staff it, it learns all of that particular ins and outs and is able to handle the needs of the district.
Thank you. Call for a vote, please. Actually, I'm, I'm making a motion.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Any matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn, and our next meeting will be on Tuesday the 25th of February at 6:30.
Okay, at this time, we reconvene the city council. We'll go to consent items. I'd like you to pull 4C.
I'd like to pull 4H, if I may, for a question.
I move the rest.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Okay, 4C. Uh, Mr. Durfee made some remarks about it. First of all, Mr. Durfee, that streetcar is going to go about the length of a hundred feet into Garden Grove. No distance. It's not gonna mess with Costco, it won't mess with any of the places you mentioned. So, it's just a streetcar that goes nowhere. And, uh, well, I can't say that. That's, that's bad news. It does go somewhere, but it goes to Harbor Boulevard. The object of it is, is what they're thinking is, is they're doing another streetcar with the same, the same type of equipment in Anaheim. And eventually, bring them down to Harbor Boulevard to, to made up. And it'll be a big circle that you could take a streetcar on if you were ready to go to work downtown Santa Ana or, and other places. And it's not what, uh, you were explaining to us this evening. So, anyway, uh, I will make a motion that we go forward with 4C.
Can I comment on that one?
Sure, absolutely.
Just wanna see if I can add a little bit of, uh, perspective, just for, kinda for all of us and for Craig as well. So, um, OCTA had some money, um, that was dedicated specifically for, uh, light rail, to, to study and to implement light rail. And so, instead of taking a top-down approach, this goes back many years ago. Instead of taking a top-down approach and just saying, here's where we think we wanna put light rail as, as OCTA, right? They said, let's do it from the ground up. Let's kinda do a, um, take a local approach. So, they gave, um, $100,000 each to each city, specifically to study within your city. Where would you have a need for light rail? What would you do with it? So, within our first district, we sorta had an opportunity to take our $100,000 and either study something on our own, or team up with Westminster, because there is a, a rail line that runs basically along Hoover, um, that goes through our city over there. Um, or team up with Santa Ana and study something that goes along the PE right-of-way that diagonals through town. Um, at the time, it had become clear that, that Westminster and Huntington Beach and other cities down, that Hoover line, were not particularly interested in doing anything with, um, with rail going through there. So, we pooled our $100,000 together with Santa Ana's $100,000, called it $200,000, and that's how this whole thing started, was to study kind of a rail line. Um, Anaheim independently took their own $100,000 and started studying a, where they would wanna put a rail line, which basically goes from the Anaheim Amtrak or MetroLink train station and through, um, the resort area and kinda dumps off by the convention center and by Harbor Boulevard. Santa Ana kinda took lead and did their own thing, going from downtown Santa Ana through Willowick and to Harbor Boulevard and sort of drops off there. If those two independent pieces came together, then, right now, we still just kinda have a dotted line along Harbor Boulevard, but the theory is, that could be a big connected loop. You already have a train station in Anaheim, train station in Santa Ana. If they have light rail that goes through their downtowns and connects to Harbor, then the eventuality is that the next logical piece is we get light rail along Harbor Boulevard, which our hoteliers seem to really like, and would create a big regional light rail loop. So, Orange County is one of the only major metropolitan cities in the country that doesn't have light rail. It's kind of embarrassing for a, a county of our population, our size, and, um, and our economic status, that we don't have any light rail in the whole thing. We just build more freeways and have more and more cars. So, it's incumbent upon cities to think about this, and OCTA as a transportation agency, to think about how to move people around more efficiently throughout the county. And that includes bikes, trains, cars, everything, so. Anyways, it's, this whole thing isn't all the way there yet, but going forward on this piece fosters a vision that ultimately tries to get us a light rail that's a big loop that's connected in the county.
And the one thing they don't have in this vision is a place to store the, where, the streetcars at night. I mean, you have to have a barn for those streetcars. And the closest place that they could put a barn would be another four, 500 feet up the line, up the rail there, and put it in their orange gro, uh, in the Garden Grove, uh, what do you call that, depot, wherever they park all the buses, right off of Harbor Boulevard. It's, the, it's, I mean, it's the, anybody can just look at it and see, well, that's the place to put it. And they'll have to put it somewhere. Now, they may think they're gonna put it on our golf course, but that's not gonna happen, so. Okay. I make a motion on 4C.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
4H.
4H, I have just a question. Uh, Speaker brought up the comment about, uh, designating the city manager with additional authority for this amount of $50,000. Is there a new standard or practice for that amount? I mean, how do we come up with $50,000? Is it practical, everyday doing business? $25,000 threshold is, is now a minimum related to authorizing city manager to execute certain agreements?
Yeah, I, I think, over the years, we've seen that the $25,000 threshold has caused several of the, uh, contracts to have to be delayed a couple of weeks and then brought forward. So this will expedite us, uh, being able to administer more routine contracts.
Okay. Cause it just keeps going up, and, again, it's just the practical side of doing business with the city.
Yeah, I think it's been 25 for as long as any of us can remember, so. Twenty years plus.
And anything over $50,000 has to go to the council, correct? Okay, thank you. With that, I'd like to move approval of 4H.
Second.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Okay, let's go. We, we have no public hearings, we have no commission committee matters. Items for consideration, 7A.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is approval of the rotational tow agreements with three, uh, tow companies, and Police Chief Kevin Rainey will be in shortly to give the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. In April of 2013, city council directed staff to open a RFP process for the police tow contract. The RFP opened in June of 2013 and closed in September of 2013. During the RFP process, eight tow companies participated in the, uh, application and the review process, and, uh, staff from both the police department and from, uh, city hall participated in the evaluation of each of the proposals, the inspections of the, uh, tow yards, and the equipment and the requirements specified by the RFP. Uh, as a result of the inspection and the evaluation process, staff has evaluated, uh, all eight of the, uh, companies that submitted proposals, and they have been, uh, published in rank order. What staff is recommending is that the top three companies that scored in the evaluation process, and if I could name them, they are BND Towing, Country City Towing, and Greater Southern California Towing. Staff's recommendation is that those three companies be awarded the tow contract for police services. And also, with the recommendation from staff, based on, uh, a six-month evaluation, if the response time and/or the volume of toes, uh, is creating a hardship for the, uh, public that we serve, to authorize the city mount, the city manager. authorize the city mount, the city manager, to enter into an agreement with the fourth tow company and, which would be Action Southland Tow, to come on to the tow rotation in the event that we need additional services to assist with our response time. One of the reasons, and the primary reason for the recommendation of staff to counsel for the three tow companies instead of the four that we have now, is that our tow services have been declining over the last three years. The law changed significantly in 2005 as it relates to impounding vehicles. And so, what we've experienced in 2011, 2012, and 2013 is a gradual decline in the number of toes. In 2013, the, between the four tow companies on the contract, they each towed about 497 vehicles per company. And so, the recommendation of staff is to now go to three companies because we believe the three companies can handle the reduced volume of toes that are currently being experienced and caused by the police department.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I have a question, though. One quick question. One of the speakers said something about a couple have dropped out, a couple tow companies. Is that true or accurate?
To my knowledge, none have dropped out during the RFP process. It was, it was discovered that several of the companies did not meet the minimum specifications set forth in the RFP, but they still were scored by the evaluating committee. They just didn't score very well.
Councilman, you may also be referring, I thought the comment was, the last time we did the RFP, we selected five companies, and one company dropped out and that's what left us was four. That might have also been the context if I'm...
Well, this time, I recall that one didn't qualify because of the size of the lot. Is that right?
During the RFP process, yes.
And then, another one didn't qualify. I remember the two, I think they didn't qualify and they couldn't fix the reason for not qualifying. One was the size of the lot, and I think it was the last one on the list. I can't remember which one it was. But after the, those two, then we would have six left? We have eight this time.
Well, again, staff evaluated eight and scored and submitted scores for eight tow companies. During the evaluation process, first it consisted of a paper screening, looking at the proposal and assertions made by the companies that they did in fact meet the minimum specifications. Those assertions were taken at face value until the staff members went and visited the respective tow companies. And then they discovered that one of the tow companies, which I believe is B&amp;D Towing, no, I'm sorry, not B&amp;D Towing. C and B Towing, does not have adequate space to house 75 vehicles, which is the minimum storage requirements for cars for the police department to, they only have the ability to store 60 vehicles, I believe. And then another tow company located in the city of Westminster that applied, which is Russell Towing.
Okay, I remember now.
Right, they did not have appropriate evidence, storage facilities for police vehicles that had to be maintained as evidence, nor did they appear to have adequate onsite parking for 75 vehicles. And they also did not have proof that they were properly and legally disposing of oil, which several of the other candidates also had the same issue with oil.
When I was reviewing the different comments that staff had on each of these, aside from the two that you just mentioned, I think Russell and C and...
C and B.
C and B, okay. The rest, I saw some of them, they had issues, but they could be resolved. And were they given notice and opportunity to submit those changes?
They were not. The inspections were completed and the scoring was completed based on that onsite visit. And none of the candidates were allowed to overcome deficiencies. The only issue that occurred was with Action Southland Tow, which at the time did not have their security system, camera, video system in place, but they were in the process of installing it. So, they were about a week away from completing the installation, where the other companies that were least efficient in the surveillance area weren't even in the process of installing camera equipment, or storage equipment also to adequately store the number of days we require.
I thought that we were going to have this in February because I was going to go see some of the other tow companies that I haven't visited to see the deficiencies. And I do know that some of them have mentioned to me that they have done the corrections needed, and I like, I actually would like to see the rest of them on the tow rotation because I think, besides one, I heard one had a lost vehicle and I don't remember that one, which one it was, but I think it's one of the top three. And I think it wasn't from our city. I think it's from another law enforcement agency. So, I think I'd like to look at them and maybe come back in February with this.
As it relates to the company that lost a vehicle, that was the company that scored number five in the process. It wasn't in the top three.
Okay, it's not, can I see that for a second? Who's in the third position?
Third position. In rank order, the top three are B&amp;D Towing, Country City Towing, and number three is, would be new to the rotation if approved by the council, is Greater Southern California Towing.
Okay. I think it was, might have been, I don't recall the name, but I don't want to mention the name, but I know it was originally one of the top ones. So, I'd like to look into that.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion to have this reviewed in February.
That motion died for a lack of second.
Well, I want to ask another question, if I may. According to this agreement, ways spelled out now, the top three would be the selection and after six months, we're going to review another applicant or the next scorer. Is it conceivable, is it possible, could we review a six-month period, the other, the performance of the three that have been selected for the contract, and then review the other applicants, just to make it open and fair? And just do, if council, Mayor Pro Tem, Dino Wynn has some issues or we can, in discovery, we can find out additional information on the other companies? Can we go for the three this time and six months have a review of the other, all the other people, all the other bids?
Well, conceivably, that could be done. Staff would then have to go out and...
It doesn't have to be a thorough, just a, just a review or evaluation of the performance of the, of the people, the contractors have it, and then review the other ones to see, we can have a review of the, the need for towing, additional towing, and if there is any performance issues with the first three, then we can move down the list and see if other potential vendors are, can step in, or we can do a review of them at six-month period. Doable?
I'd be reluctant, for the benefit of the companies who've taken the effort to put forth the proposal and make the investments to sustain a contract over a certain period of time, I'm not sure it'd be fair to those, would they have to operate on sort of a six-month interval? I don't think they would find that a good business situation to be in. Perhaps, so I would recommend that the top three, we enter into the contract and they fulfill their term. The fourth one, and I'm sort of speaking in place of the chief so he can kick me, whether or not you wanted to, as part of the review, if a fourth one would be determined to be more serving, that the demand is such that a fourth one should be added, if at that time you wanted to keep all of them in place, that might be an alternative, and I'm not even sure if that's even fair to, to the group. But I, I wouldn't think it would be a good business position to be in for the three, that they would be on a six-month probation, so to speak. You know, they, they need to know that they've got a contract just like any other business. So...
Well, that doesn't exclude them from continuing on as a contractor. It's just a matter of determining who the, makes the, the need and, you know, I don't have a problem with the performance after six months of anybody that attains the contract. So, I hear what you're saying, it's not fair, but I'm not doing this to be fair. I think it's an evaluation of the, their performance. I mean, we have all the written information, we have the references and this and that, but the true test is in the performance. So, after six months, we can judge those. And they can continue on, and then at that time, we can also review the other contractors, vendors that have applied.
I think I know where Councilman Beard's going with it. I think we should keep the top three and review, continue to review the other three that is trying to comply and is, are doing that, and maybe in about six months, bring them back. If they meet all the requirements, then put them on the rotation.
You know, the two things I hate are the tow trucks. I don't know, there used to be ambulances were number one. I hated ambulances. And we'd have five or six different ambulance companies in here and argue and fight and, and if, if the, if the other three brought themselves up to excellence, there's still not enough business to maintain six tow trucks, the rotation of six tow, tow companies. So, you literally, I mean, someone was just going to go out of business because there's not that much business to be had. So, I think we ought to just do what the, everybody got in it, it was fair and square, and let's vote on the, on doing it the way it's set up for those three. Otherwise, we just go on forever and ever and ever, well, I don't think I like this part of it and I don't think I like that part of it. It's routine we've always had.
I think it's, I'm sorry, Mayor, am I mean, add, I think it's competitive, and I looked at some of the efficiencies. I think they can be fixed, and I think they have been fixed by the parties. For one, oil, hazardous oil containers, the people who want to be in the rotation and now putting in hazardous oil container, proper equipment, the people who want to be in rotation and now complying with that. If they didn't make the top three their first cut because maybe some deficiency, they didn't know that we wanted, I think they should have a second chance. And our city is not the only contract that they can have, and the police tow business isn't the only business that the tow company can have. And I think we're here to make sure that the public is well-served by a competitive industry out there. And I think the more we have, the more, the better service we will have. I understand that it is better for business to have less competitors, but in this case, I think that there is enough to go around, and the city business is just a small chunk of the towing business. And I noticed that in the process, a lot of the tow company has submitted other contracts that they have with other agencies and, and other private entities. So, they're not limited just to Garden Grove. I think, I think compared to the other cities, if we were to take the three now and consider the other three later, we can afford to do that.
If I may ask a few questions. Chief, as far as the raider who we have here, if you just give us some insight on how they were chosen, if also, if all these tow companies had a heads-up as far as what we were looking for, so that we're all on the same page? Because I think sometimes when we have going in companies that we've been working with before, they may have a corporate advantage to know what we're looking for if we didn't disclose fully exactly what we're looking for in the beginning with all the companies. I would feel more comfortable if all of our requirements were disclosed upfront and they failed to meet it, then we would have fair competition.
And that's exactly how it's done. What happens, the RFP process lays out the, all of the requirements prior to them actually sending in the paperwork. Once they send in the package, basically what they're saying is that they comply with all the requirements to be a police tow. So, they knew what the rules were upfront. And as far as the inspection go, the inspections are done by a cross-section of city personnel. It's not just the police department. We take a cross-section of people from the police department and city hall, and we form this committee. And then, of course, we don't tell them when we're going to inspect them. They're already in the process, they've already submitted their package, we've already reviewed their package, they've already passed that portion of the process, and then we walk in and do the inspection. If at that time, they're not ready to go at that point, after they've been told what the requirements are, after they've submitted the package that says, yes, we meet the requirements, and then we do the inspection and find out, in fact, they have not met the requirements, that's where it falls on the scale, and that's how we come up with, in this case, one through eight.
And also, at the beginning of the RFP process, there's a, a meeting between city staff that's involved in the, in the evaluation process and prospective vendors. And so, the companies have the opportunity to sit down and go over the, the written requirements specified in the RFP, and if there's any questions that could be clarified, it's all done in a meeting before the inspection process even starts.
So, even though we have a point sheet where it may appear subjective as far as how the points roll out, all these points were based on conditions that we had set across the boards for everybody, and everybody knew exactly what to expect going in, what the points should or could come out based on their adhering to what we expect them to do.
Exactly.
Chief, what did you say about Action Southland Towing?
I think what I said in the evening's presentation is that they came in number four in the evaluation rankings. And so, the recommendation, the initial recommendation to council is to authorize the city manager to execute the contracts and bring the top three tow companies onboard as the contract providers for the police department. And after the six-month evaluation period, as it relates to the, the service, if we're having delays due to an increase in the volume, to authorize the city manager to then go to number four, which would be Action Southland, to assist in the volume of police tows.
Before we opened this tow contract bidding, we had a meeting, and I forgot who put on the presentation, but one of, Sergeant put on the presentation, and we were told that B&amp;D Towing, Country City Towing, Action Southland Towing, and Cardwell, Cardwell's Towing were doing okay, and we were happy with them. And so, now, we're dropping off two of those original four. And I think if we were happy with them, why should we drop them off?
Well, that's, that's part of the RFP process. It allows other competitors that may be new to the business or maybe haven't participated as far as in the Garden Grove RFP process before to at least participate and compete. And if the evaluation team finds that they actually grade out higher, that, then they arguably have a better proposal at the time and can provide a better service. That's part of the competitive bid process.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Just want to make a quick comment first. I mean, I believe this was a pretty exhaustive process, and I think, kind of heading into it, our police was, our police department was satisfied with where we were at before we started this process, but there was sort of nudging from the private sector community and the competitive environment to, to open it up and to even open up the geographical boundaries and do a lot of things that, that we accommodated to lead into this. And our police department, which is overworked and understaffed, okay, we all are, everybody is, but I genuinely believe they are, got put in this position where they had to go out and do all this back study. I mean, create a process and create all the documentation and follow the, you know, follow it to make sure it was applied fairly, go out and do all the inspections. So, I mean, I think they've done a pretty exhaustive job of doing what they did and coming up with a, a limited amount of business and how many different companies it should be shared between in order to maintain some degree of leverage. be shared between in order to maintain some degree of leverage for the city in terms of enforcing those contracts, and enough business to make it worthwhile for the individual vendors to care about, you know, maintaining their position in that. So I think they did a good job, and I would, I would just support what they came up with at the end of all that, and, you know, we'll deal with this again the next time it comes up down the line, I'm sure it will. So I'd like to make a motion to, to follow the staff recommendation as proposed.
I want to make a substitute motion to include Southland Towing, make it four company, because I think to give more time later to include Southland there is just more work for staff, and staff already considered that they would prospectively include Southland, so why not include them now and save us going through this again?
Do we have a substitute motion? Do we have a second for the substitute motion?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes, so we have Mayor Broadwater and Councilmember Jones voting no.
Okay, it's, it passed, her substitute motion passed, or the other motion is void, we will go with four organizations. Okay, we have no ordinances presented, we manage the mayor, Mr. Chris Barrett.
Well, I just want to say that the sister city, the students exchange, they were here, they came, they had a good time, we had a good time as a host family, so the Garden Grove Sister City Association is an excellent organization that facilitates the cultures between our sister city, and it was an excellent, wonderful time, I commend those volunteers who are part of it. Cam Engels is the president, and I want to recognize him and all the volunteers and the host families, so look forward to our students going over to Korea, they're so well-received, and the hospitality they receive is phenomenal, so they're off, and we hope to see them again next year. And with that, the Tet Festival's coming up, and I encourage, at Garden Grove Park, I'll be there, I hope to see a lot of people there, and then I'll see all the public officials there, it's going to be a great time, I encourage all the public to come out and participate.
Dina?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind everyone to go to the Tet Festival this weekend, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there'll be lots of food and fun and entertainment for all the family, and you're supporting Garden Grove if you go to Garden Grove Festival. Also, please buy in Garden Grove, we have many events coming up, especially the holidays, Valentine's, and Lincoln's birthday, so you'll see a lot of sales around the city, and also, I wanted to thank Cam for taking the kids to Korea, and I hope they have a blessed trip, and also a safe trip.
Chris?
Just wanted to say, I do apologize for missing the exchange students when they were here, I was actually invited to be a keynote speaker over at the Mid-Atlantic Student Conference this past weekend, and they gave me half an hour to present, and I knew I couldn't speak for half an hour, so I brought our well-done State of the City video with me. I promised everybody that I probably recruited another 300 visitors at the least to our city, because when I was over there, it was 17 degrees without the windshield, and they saw our video, like, "We're going to Garden Grove." So that was why I wasn't here, but also want to remind everyone that aside from our festival next, or this weekend, we also have the Tet Parade on Saturday morning over in Westminster on Bolsa, and then on the following weekend, there's another Tet Festival over in the Orange County Fairgrounds. So there's a lot of Tet coming your way, so please come out and enjoy.
Just want to commend the mayor on a well-done State of the City this past week, we do have a lot of exciting things going on in the city, and it's great to be a part of it, and then just happy New Years to everyone out there celebrating the Tet celebration, and hope you all come out for the festival and the parade this weekend.
I thought that the State of the City was, the staff that wrote it did a great job, the filming was great, and it was all about positive things, it was about nothing negative, so I guess we deserve what we got tonight on the negative end. So anyway, it was good, it really was. I know that some of us were worried, not me, but some of the council were worried that there wouldn't be a Tet Festival this year, there's three of them, so more Tet than you need. Okay, I'm going to read this little, it is from the Kiwanis Club, and so if it say Kiwanis in it, you'll see why that's the way it is. "We received word that Bob Main, 55-year member of the Garden Grove Kiwanis Club, Boys' Club, and founder, HOG trustee, and longtime supporter of the Boys' and Girls' Club of Garden Grove, passed away after a long-term illness. This is truly a sad day for the extended Kiwanis family and the community. Bob was a longtime Garden Grove Kiwanis Club member and a community supporter, he will truly be missed by his family and friends as well as the community. Please keep his family and loved ones in your thoughts." I'd like to mention that Bob is, was sometimes a supporter, sometimes he was on the other side of the fence, and the city of Garden Grove took over the sanitary district, I don't know how many years, but Bob was on it, he was elected official on it, I don't think they ever had an election because nobody ran against him, but they were there for 20, 25 years, and Bob was a member of it. And the one thing I know about Bob is, when they, when they increased the size of the 22 freeway, oh, six, seven years ago, Bob was the guy to cut the ribbon for it when they finally got it all done, and he was the guy to cut the ribbon for it, because he cut the ribbon to open the freeway 50 years ago, so that was why. I will miss Bob, he was positive and negative and everything else, but he was fun, so we'll close tonight in his name. And we will come back on the 11th of February, first, second Tuesday in February at 6:30 PM. Thank you very much.